Welcome to the Monday, June 6th, meeting of the Pembroke Board of Selectmen. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15, and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. We'll begin the meeting with announcements. Phil?
I do have announcements, Mr. Chairman. Pembroke Police Boys Club is sponsoring a con hole tournament. If anybody doesn't know what a con hole tournament is, it's like the bean bags that they throw from one little box or another trying to get it in a little hole. The Lucky Dog Tavern in Grill down on Mataquesa Street offered to run that for us for a fundraiser for the boys' club for equipment and repairs to the inside of the building. So that'll be this Saturday, June 11th. You can sign up right down there at the Lucky Dog at any time. They'll put your name on the list. You can do male, female, young, old, whatever you want to do. It's going to start at 10:30 in the morning, and then as it goes throughout the day, as people lose or whatever, then the winners just keep going up until they have a playoff at the end of the time. So we're going to have some music there by PJ the DJ is going to be there. He'll be doing announcements, and we'll have some raffles, silent auctions, and other stuff going on at the place during the day. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to do pontoon boat rides on Furnace Pond during the day, so a lot of people that don't like throwing bean bags or whatever might want to take a ride around Furnace Pond. There's a lot of people who probably haven't been on Furnace Pond before, so we've got five people that have donated their boats, including myself, to give the people rides around the pond during the day. And we will have a sunset cruise at night, just before sunset, and of course that'll be limited to the amount of boats we have and the amount of people that want to do the sunset. So just thought that we would try something a little bit different in Pembroke, so we're going to do that. So you're all welcome to come. It's all geared up for family down there. I know that the owner of the Lucky Dog is going to have hot dogs, hamburgers, and stuff like that for the people that are involved in the events for free, and of course naturally you have to buy your own liquid refreshment, but it's up to you. You know, so we'd like to see you come down and at least stop by, and if you don't do anything else, stop by and take a ride on the lovely pond down there. So looking forward to having it to be a good event.
Thank you, Phil. Any other announcements, anyone? Hearing none, I would like to welcome the folks from PAC-TV who are here tonight to give us their annual presentation on how well they have done for the town of Pembroke in the past year. And we have Donna Rodriguez, Julie Thompson, Dave Antoine here tonight. So I'll turn it over to you, Donna.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We really appreciate it. I see you all have your packets in front of you. We had sent the board our 2015 annual report, just an update for all four of our towns, and I think we just wanted to start off to see if you have any questions after reviewing the report, and then we'd like to tell you a little bit about what's happening so far this year.
Any questions for Donna?
I don't have any questions. I think you're doing a great job, and glad to have you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Believe it or not, this month is coming up on four years since we've been providing support and services to the town of Pembroke, so it's really surprising to us how quickly that time has gone, and also how much everything has grown in such a short period of time. Dave and I are hoping to give you updates on some of the general things that we've been doing throughout this year, what some of our upcoming plans are, and Dave's going to talk to you a little bit about government. Actually, do you want to start with talking about some of the government meetings first?
Sure.
We're here for a town meeting.
I'm not going to lie, it feels a little surreal to be on the other side of the camera, the guy operating the camera, but you know, we've been with the lovely town of Pembroke for four years, and there's no sign of stoppage with the Government Access. As for the year 2016, including tonight, we've covered 19 Board of Selectmen meetings, one town meeting, and as of tonight, one, actually 15 Pembroke Board Committee meetings. That was the initiative where we started covering the other boards and committee meetings throughout Town Hall. And as I speak tonight, our gentleman Ryan Craig is taping tonight's Attorney Board of Appeals, which is on the other side. And we've also got about nine episodes so far of Pembroke Today. And Government Access is as robust as ever. You know, we've got some big changes coming, some really exciting ones, though. These are my notes here. We, as far as like local, county, and state informational programs, we have, you know, nine programs or nine episodes of Pembroke Today. And then we're on our fourth episode of Elder Savvy with Anna Siri, who's a wonderful person, and we're still getting her Bulletin Board announcements, and we're posting them on the Government Access Bulletin Board. And then we've got shows coming from Sheriff McDonald of the State Communities, Registered Report with Plymouth County Register John Buckley, Scales is Justice with the DA Tim Cruz, and Crosstalk with State Rep Cutler, which is produced out of the Lubbock-Hanson Station. And one very exciting thing coming for Government Access is going to be a new program with District Attorney Cruz and Sheriff McDonald to address the ongoing opioid crisis. Our plan is to start at the end of June, and that's currently in works right now. Given the situation, what's happened, we figure it's a pretty topical topic to tackle.
And that's a show that's also going to be coming out of the Plymouth County Task Force on opioid abuse, so the sheriff and the DA came to us saying that they wanted to do this together. So they're going to be speaking about the issue from all different points of view, from the scientific end, from the medical end, from supports and services available in all of our communities, and talking about what we can all be doing together to work through this problem. So we're really excited to be working with them to turn this to the towns, considering especially the impact it has on all of our communities. Some of the shows Dave was telling you about, in addition to the regular government meetings that we cover, and of course every Board of Selectmen's meeting, but the town administration tells us which other boards you'd also like to see covered. Our informational government programming really helps to bring background information and additional information to residents. So that's where the talk shows come from, being able to really get into issues that are happening in the communities and talk about them in more detail. So Dave is constantly working to increase that programming and to add new programming as needed, so we're always looking to hear from you. We have one that was special a couple of years ago, when they were working on the community building?
Yes, Pembroke Community Center update. When Greg Handley was sitting on the board at the time, we produced a show regarding that. That was born out of an idea with coverage of the Community Center Committee, but there were so many people who were trying to juggle their own schedules that we thought it'd be a great idea to have a talk show format. We even taped any new episodes later, but that was a pretty robust show that we produced.
And that's always an option, so you don't have to have a regular ongoing show
Yes.
in order to be able to do some special programming on the government channel to get information out to folks. One of the other things that, of course, you know that we've been doing since we started providing services in the town is our Educational Access Program. That's the program that's really exploded, I think, in the town of Pembroke since we started. Most of you knew Caroline Garrett, who started the program at Pembroke High School. She just at the beginning of this year moved to New York. She's moving into the commercial end of the industry and doing a wonderful job already, as I'm sure you can imagine. We have a new young man who is a Kingston resident who's working with us. His name is Zach Dolan. He's doing a great job. He took over in January. The reason he's not here tonight is because he has four events this week at the high school. You guys have such a robust performing arts program. He's been covering all of the events with students at the schools. He was at the graduation, of course, on Saturday. He was there on Thursday night with Julie, giving away two scholarships to two very deserving graduates from Pembroke High School. So that program continues to go. Right now, we have our staff members doing 20 hours a week with Pembroke, and we're planning to continue that moving forward. We have a classroom with fine art swing at the school, and in that room, we have camera equipment, we have editing equipment, and we also have what we call a studio in a box that they're able to take anywhere in the school to be able to provide coverage, whether it be taped or live, of all the events that happen.
And Zach's done some really great things with those students. They're really getting their experience in.
One, two of the students who are working with him this year for their senior project, they, for the last couple of months, have been working with PCN, so they've been producing pieces for the news about Pembroke, and they've really been able to build up a white portfolio for themselves when they're in college. So we're really proud of what they've been able to do also.
Yeah.
Some of the other things we want to tell you about, we have, this past summer, we have a youth program that does documentary work in the summer, and it's a two-week program. It's for kids going into eighth and ninth grade, and for the last two years, they've won national awards. Last summer, they did a piece on Fidelis, which, as you know, is a local business, and we just found out they won a national award. We have another program coming up this summer. It's going to be the last week of July and first week of August. We still have a few spaces open, so if there are people watching, you can just check out the website, pactv.org, for more information and to be able to get registration forms. Anything else you want to cover for government?
Well, as far as government programming, it's also still available as video on demand. So the Select meetings and Pembroke Board Committee meetings are available as video on demand by Wednesday for the Selectmen, and Pembroke Board Committee meetings are available as video on demand by Thursday. It seems like a lot of the viewership has aimed more toward the internet since we live in the age of YouTube, that people are watching our stuff on the website, and it's been really great. And the added benefit now is that social media, we're able to share things to let people know when it's going to air, things of that nature. And just a heads up, just a reminder, the Pembroke Board Committee meetings, they're taped on Monday, and then they will replay on Thursday night at 7 o'clock and 3:30 PM on Saturday on the government channel.
For people interested in seeing the schedules as well, if you go to the main page of pactv.org, you can click on the Government tab, and you can take a look at any of the schedules for any of the channels that we operate.
And each schedule goes by the day, so when you click on the link, you'll see Wednesday, and it's a Wednesday that you're clicking on it. And we'll send out programming schedules to the board as well.
And we're sure you're all familiar with PAC-TV Community News or PCN. Your town administrator has been on, I think, is it three segments so far this year on Town Talk, talking about what's happening in the town of Pembroke. We're really excited. Our 200th episode is going to be airing this November, and so far this year, we've already done 21 segments for the town of Pembroke. One of the ways that show is going to grow, there's been, the biggest problem Kim and her news team have had, honestly, is being able to keep up with all the stories because there's so much happening in our four towns. So they've decided this summer that they're going to add on to PCN. Kim and her team, they do a number of lifestyle segments, such as local eats and things on health and wellness and decor and different personal interests. So starting this summer, they're going to be having two new segments, or I'm sorry, two new episodes each month. It's going to be called PCN Life. So that's going to be where a lot of the lifestyle pieces are going to air, and that way it's going to allow for more of the stories that are happening in our four towns. PCN airs every Thursday night on Channel 13, but you also, as Dave was saying, you can watch that video on demand, and you can also watch it on YouTube.
Yep. We have a PAC-TV Video Share Channel, which encompasses everything from PAC-TV Community News and government programming. And as of today, we covered an event over at the library that was hosted by Josh Cutler related to Lyme disease and ticks, which will be airing on the number of channels soon, and it will be on YouTube as well. Pretty interesting.
Some of the other things that are coming up too, that we're talking about, we are going to be having some upgrades at our studio that are going to be able to continue to improve upon the quality of what you're seeing on the channels. It's going to be digital versus analog, so Phase 1 of that installation is happening this month. Phase 2 will be coming a little further down the line. It's going to be able to add some additional streaming capabilities and live capabilities for us moving forward. Right now, we're also working on what we can do this fall, leading into election season, and also to improve upon the candidate options or candidate statement options that we have. We're working with Gatehouse Media to develop some new products and hopefully to be able to give more coverage to our local elections and folks who are running for office, in addition to the candidate statements
Yep.
that Dave and his team already did.
It's been a pretty exciting change that has been coming.
And as you've seen, you've seen how we've grown just in the four years, and we're constantly trying to improve upon and build upon the services we offer our four towns. Part of that growth, one of the other exciting things that's happened this year is our board decided to reorganize or relook at our management structure to better be able to fit the needs of our organization where it is today and where we see it moving forward. So Nancy Richard, who you are familiar with, is our executive director. She's now our Director of Finance. Julie Thompson is now our Director of Administration, and Dan Rodriguez is now our Managing Director. So from your point of view, there probably won't be many visible changes, and it's been going along very well with the team working together.
And we've also started, on a different note, we've started posting the agendas for the Bulletin Board, so they'll be airing both on the channel and on the website. So if people missed that Bulletin Board, they can just go to pactv.org, and now there will be a link for the community going where they can see the agenda, in addition to the internet posting.
We've talked a lot about our community services and our government services, but we also do have a lot available to the public. So if there are people in the community who are interested, we couldn't possibly do the amount of work we do in our communities without our volunteers. And they're all folks who live in our four towns, who have an interest in video production, who have an interest in their communities and volunteer work. So if there's anybody who's watching who's interested in finding out how they can either volunteer, or if they have an idea for their own television show and would like to do something themselves, we are there and we exist to teach people how to create their own programming and have access to a public channel. Any questions?
Lou and I were talking earlier about this quality of the signal, and I think Dave pointed out to me how there was going to be a change and how that was going to happen, so you might want to share it with the board.
Quality of the signal specifically for your government channel for live, was there any specific that you were looking at?
It had to do with where the signal was coming in as opposed, a little like to Pembroke and to the studio in Plymouth as opposed to now or in the future, it's going to go straight to Plymouth?
Yeah. Dan Rodriguez, our Managing Director, is addressing that now, but it's going to be a reengineering of how we transmit the channels to Comcast. It's going to become a digital format. Unfortunately, I don't have the mental capacity that Dan has, but I can assure you it's going to be a major improvement.
If you'd like, if you'd like more specific information about the engineering behind all of that and what's going to be changing moving forward, we can always schedule a time for Dan to come in and give you a five-minute update.
The largest change is that we're going from analog to digital.
Yes.
So the quality is going to bump up. It's not going to be HD, but it's certainly going to be a greater quality than now.
Well, actually, it is going to be HD.
Oh.
Correct me if I'm wrong. It is going to be HD, but we cannot transmit or cable cast HD. We do not have an HD channel to put it on. So the signal that's leaving the studio is HD, but what people are seeing at home is standard definition. There has been a movement across the state, and as contracting is coming up in different towns, trying to negotiate with the cable companies to be able to have access to HD channels, as well as to be able to have our channel guides appear on the channels for viewers to be able to find your programming.
On that, can I ask, how will PAC-TV help the town of Pembroke when our cable contract ends? Our cable contract is up in 2018. Right now, we're forming a committee to negotiate a new contract with Comcast, and I'd like PAC-TV to be partners in that.
Thank you. And I will ask, one of our board presidents is here, so if I'm speaking or if there's anything you'd like to add, please let us know, and please feel free to join us. My understanding is, with the, working with cable advisory committees and working with recontracting with each cable company, our job has been more along the lines of assisting the town and negotiating for what we think would be best for you when it comes to public educational government programming, and helping the town to be able to advocate for what you think your needs are when it comes to customer service and other issues with a cable company. For instance, talking about things like what are the percentages you're receiving for public educational government, what are the things that you would like to, how you think the town could benefit from increased services perhaps?
Well, we certainly want to use you as a resource within your program.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to that. I found out that Nancy Richards has been doing some negotiating for other towns with Comcast. I have a meeting with her next week.
Okay, great.
And I'm going to get some information to bring back to the board on just what your company has been doing for the other towns and get a feel for how that has been working.
Okay, great. And in Massachusetts, each town negotiates individually with the cable companies, so it's not uncommon that there would be a central like ours that were providing services to more than one town, but there to be more than one contract with different details in each contract, based on what the town negotiated for themselves. And Nancy is, in addition to being Director of Finance, she is also doing work with the recontracting because our contracts are coming up over the next several years in all four of our towns, Plymouth being the first official town.
Well, she's been very helpful over the phone.
Wonderful.
And she suggested that we sit down, and she can give me some information on that that I can bring back to the board.
Wonderful.
So I'll be doing that. One of the things I'd like to thank you folks for is all the additional boards and committees that have been covered in the past year. It's been about 20 of them.
With David's team, yes.
So that is really good, because we would like to continue with that and maybe even add some, because the folks at home would like to know what's going on, and this is an excellent way for them to do it at their leisure and still keep up with the events in the town and the important things that our folks are in the process of working on.
Absolutely.
We're really glad to hear that.
And another way, as I mentioned before, with the informational programming, if you find it being challenging of only being able to cover the other board's certain, you know, say, once a month, on average is what you're doing right now, correct?
Yeah, for the initial program.
There's always the option for a town administrator or another elected official, if you decide you would like to have an ongoing talk show to bring in members of other boards or to be able to educate people about hot topics in towns, things that are happening in the different boards, that might not be able to always be covered in meetings. If there isn't enough opportunity to cover all the meetings, that's always another option. It doesn't even have to be ongoing, as I mentioned earlier. You can come in and do a special if there's something coming up that you feel residents need more information about to be able to make informed decisions.
An example is, we produce a program with Kingston Town Planner, and it's a limited series, but Kingston unveiled a master plan. So it's an ongoing series right now, but it's limited, and I think his plan is to give about 20 episodes, but that's a great example, so if you're interested. Only thing we can't guarantee is we can't guarantee and make up the television. You'll have to come in by yourself.
Well, Lou, an example is the one that we did with Lisa
Yes.
on the trash program, and we're going to be doing a follow-up on that. We explained in a half-hour show about what the new trash program is going to be. We had videos or slides and pictures in, and we'll probably do a demonstration of the operation here at Town Hall
Right.
that PAC-TV is, you know, is volunteered to tape so that we can show the residents how the operation is actually going to work with the todes and the machinery. So that'll be the second segment of our program on the new trash program.
Yep, and you're on YouTube now, actually. That show is on YouTube.
So it can get to more people.
Yep.
You can also talk to the folks at Gatehouse about perhaps linking some of these videos of informational programming on the Wicked Local site, so the more places you have to get the information out, the better reach you're going to have with residents.
And there is one thing we did, it was, it's the first time we ever did this, posting town meetings on YouTube. Pembroke had its first town meeting posted to YouTube. Afterwards, it was recorded and aired live, but I think it got over 15 views so far. It's living on YouTube now.
Can I ask, speaking of that, the on-demand menu, not everything seems to be on-demand through your website. Is there another way to access every bit of programming through YouTube, and how do you link to that other Googling?
There is. All the government meetings, by default, they have to. We always put them as video on demand, and any informational program we produce outside, or any informational program we produce inside becomes video on demand. Anything that's outside programming, we don't use that as video on demand. It's because we have a server, and the server can only take up so much space, and automatically the communities we serve that take precedent over outside programming, but we can make it available as video on demand.
With our new equipment, we're going to have more video on demand capabilities. Once things are installed, we'll be putting information out to our communities as to how they can reach that. There is some programming that never will be video on demand, however, and that's things that are produced by independent folks in the community. It's not our content, and it's for our free speech channels, so we are also not, we aren't responsible for the content, nor do we own it, so we can't put something out on the internet that we're not responsible for.
I know one thing that would probably be good for, excuse me, James, that would be good for interest, because there's a lot of people that I receive calls from or talk to, is the Route 14 project, or any of the bigger projects that's going on in town, and why are they cutting down so many trees? What are they doing now? How are the roads? So there's a lot of people that have interest in, have no way of probably finding that out unless they call the DPW director or whatever. Naturally, he's busy. There's a little beat during the day, but probably something like that, even if it was on the agenda that we did here once or twice a month or something, and maybe had somebody from either the police or DPW or something to come in and talk about any kind of road closures. I mean, there's a lot of stuff coming up that's within the next three years, so I'm sure that people would be interested in stuff like that.
We'd be happy to sit down with you guys and finish that out.
Yeah.
And those are things that you can talk about on Town Talk, too, for shorter bits of information, and those, any of those segments, they're by themselves online, so they're all on PCN's page on YouTube, so those are things you can also link to the town website. You could ask to share with Wicked Local to be able to make those segments available to as many people in as many places as possible.
Could you just talk about the data that you have of viewership, you know, how many eyeballs are actually watching it? Do we get a Nielsen reading type? And on your website, maybe how many clicks you get? Just curious if there's data to support the viewership.
It's a really good question, and it's one we get asked and we ask all the time. Unfortunately, we're not given the information from the cable companies as to the number of viewers. We can tell you how many households are subscribers in our different communities, but we're not able to break it down and say this many people are watching the Board of Selectmen's meeting at this time. We're able to track clicks and views online. Our marketing director has spent a lot of time researching and studying online trends to be able to constantly improve the viewership online and to be able to get information out to our communities through PCN, through a lot of the different pieces that Dave does with our town elected and appointed officials.
Oh, just to put a public information, some folks, when we first changed the PAC-TV, were concerned that, well, they don't have cable and they want community access, if you remember back when it was a local programming station. So could you just let the folks at home who would be watching this or hear from a friend that they can access all the programming through your website?
Yes, anything the PAC-TV produces as an organization, so any of our government programming, our original programming, such as public service announcements, PCN, any of the things like Titan TV News that we do at Pembroke High School, all of that is available on the channel, but also online. If it's something that's produced by an independent producer, again, since that's not our content, we can't put that out there online, but we help our producers and members learn how to put their own programming online if they choose. So if people go to PAC-TV Video Share, if they go to PCN on YouTube, if they just go to our website, there are places all throughout the website to be able to link people to anything that we do have online, as well as getting to video demand directly on the website. So it's just simply pactv, P-A-C-T-V dot org, and you'll find all the links you need right there.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming in. I would like to say that I have left out someone tonight when I introduced you. Gary Gumpwright is here. Thank you, Gary, for coming. He's been a very big supporter of the town of Pembroke with PAC-TV, and I just wanted to recognize Gary for being here tonight. Thank you, Gary.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say, the dedication piece on Carl Pratt was well-done. He was a sport guy in high school sports.
We miss him.
Yeah, he was the cable TV, with Bill Wilhelm as the radio. That's really same thing.
Absolutely. We definitely miss Carl. He's an amazing community supporter. 25 years, he produced video sports page, so there are generations that grew up knowing Carl Pratt.
Over 1,000 shows.
We were honored to work with him.
Well, thank you very much for coming in tonight and giving us this update. I think we're very pleased with your performance
Glad to hear it.
in the past year, and we're looking forward to all these great new things that you've got planned.
Thank you, and we welcome your input at any time. Please feel free to contact any one of us, and if you'd like Dan to come in to talk a little bit more about the technology, we'd be happy to arrange that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
We have a public hearing this evening scheduled for 7:30, and I think we have the folks here. Would you like to come up front, please? This public hearing is to hear public comment in regards to the package store license transfer application of Khalid Patel, sole owner, manager, and shareholder of G&amp;D Food Corporation, doing business as Pudding Brook
doing business as Pudding Brook Pantry. This license is exercised at 270 Washington Street, currently by Matisse Patel of Pudding Pantry, Inc. The applicant has satisfied the core requirements. There is no ZBA requirement on this package store transfer. We have all the information in front of us. If you'd like to introduce yourselves.
My name is Attorney George Perry, and this is Shalish Patel, who is the sole shareholder and officer of the corporation, which is purchasing the business. I have just a brief summary, which you have in the other documents, but this indicates the material that we've covered. Briefly, Shalish, I've known him and his family in connection with several transactions. They're people of very high moral standards, and they work hard, and they're very diligent in conducting their businesses in an honorable way. He has more than ten years in working in businesses of his kind, not as the manager of the legal license, but as helping to conduct those businesses. And as I said, he'd be the sole officer and director of the corporation. He's planning to work full-time in the business. If he meets all the statutory standards in terms of age and residency and experience. The business is being financed in part by Rockland Trust, which has issued a commitment for the loan. The seller is financing the inventory, and his savings covers the remainder of the purchase price. And there'll be a pledge of the legal license to Rockland Trust and the payoff of that loan. And then also, they've made arrangements with the landlord for the assignment of the existing lease. So are there any questions for Shalish?
Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Not hearing any questions. Do we have anyone that's here tonight in opposition? Hearing none, I would move on and ask, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to apply, to approve the application for the transfer, package store wine and malt license, 0960-0026, from Pudding Brook Pantry, Inc., to Shalish Patel, manager of G&amp;V Food Corporation, doing business as Pudding Brook Pantry, to be exercised at 270, also known as 264 Washington Street, consisting of a fifty-by-fifty construction on a concrete slab, one large room, one small room, plus a walk-in cooler, all of the same, all on the same floor, entrance and exit on Washington Street, and a fire exit at the rear.
Have a motion from Bill. Do I have a second? Second by Arthur. Any questions from the board members? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, four to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wish us a best of luck.
There's a second motion.
Second motion, please.
I'll move to approve the pledge of the license, number 0960-0026, held by G&amp;V Food Corporation, doing business at Pudding Brook Pantry, to be pledged to Rockland Trust Company.
Thank you, Arthur. Here's a second motion by Arthur, second by Bill. Any questions? All in favor of motion two? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, four to zero.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur.
Mrs. Chalk has been very helpful in this conversation. She's very efficient.
Thank you very much.
It's always good to hear.
Our next item on the agenda is the reappointment to the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors. Elder Services has requested the Board of Selectmen to reappoint their nominee to the Board of Directors, and the Council on Aging Board has met and unanimously nominated to reappoint COA Director Anna Siri to serve as the delegate to the Board of Directors. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I will move the appointment of Anna Siri as the Old Colony Elder Services representative.
Motion by Arthur, second by Bill. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's four to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Selectmen's summer schedule, which we have before us. This schedule is proposed to run from June 13th to September 5th, Labor Day. Regular weekly meetings will resume on September 12th. The Board of Selectmen will meet in June on the 13th and the 27th, in July on the 11th and the 25th, in August on the 8th and the 22nd. In September, we will resume our regular weekly meetings starting September 12th. If any major issues arise, the chairman can call a special meeting of the board. Any questions on the summer schedule? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept this schedule?
Accept is written, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Arthur. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's four to zero. Thank you. We have the minutes of May 23rd to consider. Do I hear a motion?
I would move that we accept the minutes of May 23rd as written.
Second. Motion by Arthur to accept, second by Dan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Four to zero. Under old business, I've been asked to make this plea that the Board of Selectmen thought it is very important to establish a town government study committee, which we have done several months ago. We got off to a good start, but then things have dwindled down to where we don't have enough members to hold a meeting. There has been some renewed interest on people that have inquired about it, and that is very hopeful, and I'm very pleased to hear that. So I'd like to announce that we are looking for town government study committee members, and if you would like more information or would like to apply, if you would contact the Selectmen's Office, Sabrina Chilcott will be happy to hear from you and to give you the information. Thank you. Any other old business? Go to the town administrators' report.
While we're on the theme of old business, Nick Ciccolo, Junior, and myself will present to the board an update on the solar project and the conversations that we're going to have with Sun Edison and power options for the board's operations.
Have you seen, there was an article recently, I think it was an AP article, but I read it in a local newspaper, that many states are doing away with the tax credit for solar energy. Arizona, Hawaii, many, several states already have. Other states have only pushed the tax credit forward a short amount of time with the thought that they may end it. It's not the case in Massachusetts right now. I think we just extended it for four to six years, something like that.
But there's an emergency legislation that allows that, and that's something that Nick and I will, you know, update the board on, what Sun Edison's plans are, what the state regulations are, what the timeframe is for the, the timeframe for the project itself. And, you know, the board can make a determination after next Monday.
And I said tax credit, but net metering is the term I should be using.
Very good. Anything else, Ed?
No, we're moving forward on the trash project, as I mentioned earlier. You know, as we get some information regarding the delivery of the toders and the delivery out to the residents, we'll make sure the board knows that and we'll announce it.
Very good. Do any of the Selectmen have an Ask the Selectmen question? Hearing none, I would move on to new business, any new business before the board? Hearing none. Upcoming issues, on June 13th and 27th, this board will review the committee and commission annual reappointments. We have a list of those that's been provided to us this evening, and we'll be reviewing that so that when we meet on the 13th and the 27th, we'll have a chance to review all of the folks that have signified that they would like to be reappointed. We have some information from the Division of Aeronautics that they will be available after June 15th, when they return from vacation, and they have identified several days in the week when they would be available for us to talk to them about the questions that have been requested and provided by abutters to the airfield that this board does not have the answers to, but the gentleman we're going to talk to will give us the guidance that we need to answer those questions. And as you remember, Bill and I have been appointed by the board to sit down with the gentleman, and we have the questions that have been submitted to this board from the abutters, and we will have a very meaningful meeting, get all these answers, and pass them on to the folks that are most interested. So that'll take place before the end of June. We will have that meeting.
What I might say, if you have a conversation with them, it's not, it's not a, it's not a big problem for us to even go there and meet them because the Hingham Ferry is now running. So we could actually go over to Hingham, hop on the Hingham Ferry, and they're ready in the building, not that far away from the Logan Fire, which is right next door to where that place is. So it may even be an enjoyable ride for you. If you want to go by boat.
Are you going to bring your fishing pole?
No, I don't think you'd be able to fish on one of those.
Well, we'll get together and--
But if it's more convenient for them.
Yeah, we will talk to the gentleman who--
I don't have a problem going up there.
Right, he's been willing to meet with us now, and we've set some tentative dates. So whatever makes the most sense, we will certainly do. Does anyone have any other issues they would like to bring up at this time? Yes?
My name is Carol Guard, and I'm here to say thank you to the first responders from the dive teams that gave the drowning victim's family closure at Silver Lake and Halifax the other day. I'm very proud of our board. Thank you.
Good, thank you for mentioning that. That's certainly a well-deserved thank you to those folks.
I actually talked to the fire chief the other day, and my boat, on-tune boat, is going to take twelve people on it, you know, for services, you know, to go over there. But being in the water as murky as it was and all that, I understand that they brought in some very new high-tech electronic equipment and stuff that State Police has to assert the board, and I'm pretty sure that that's how they finally located them, which is something that Pembroke should be looking at in the future. You should definitely support the fire chief if he's looking to either do that as a county group where they all get together and everybody puts in the money to get some pieces of equipment like that. I think it's well worth it to retrieve them early, early in the stages of the rescue rather than a recovery, so.
Right. It was a sad weekend for several people. Is there any other business before the board? Hearing none, I will announce that the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be on Monday, June 13th at 7:00 PM. And I will entertain, Mr. Fawn, do we have an executive session this evening? We have none. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn this public meeting.
I will move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Arthur, Bill. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Four to zero. Thank you for watching us tonight, and we look forward to seeing you again next Monday, the 13th. Thank you.